Lonnie, would you deliver the invocation, please?
Lord, we thank your opportunity to gather together. Lord, we just ask you, as the year goes on, that Mayor and Council conducts business for the veteran of the city and watch over all the people in the festivals and activities that's going on this month. Amen.
Tony? Police, please.
Police, please.
We are the United States of America. We are the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me, say it. Counsel has a copy of the agenda. Would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Say.
Motion is second. Discussion? Being none, all in favor, vote by a show of hands. Thank you, Counsel. If you'd have it. Lisa, would you read the minutes, please? July 6th, 2018.
Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order from at 6:00 p.m. He requested Lonnie Waters give the invocation. Councilmember Ensign Navy led in a recital of the pledge allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked if the agenda be reviewed and approved by Council. Councilmember Ensign Navy requested item H be added to hold executive session to discuss a legal issue. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to approve the agenda with the addition to add item H for executive session to discuss a legal issue. Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver stated to note for the record that Tommy Fountain was absent from the meeting. City Clerk Lisa Hall read the minutes of the June 4th, 2018 regular meeting. She noted a change to be made to delete that an executive session had been held. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to adopt the minutes with the change. Councilmember Kirk Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item A under old business. Mayor Weaver recognized Sunny Underwood planning and zoning director to present an alcohol license application for Council's for approval. He informed Council that Chairman Wayne, owner of the Aitley Asian Restaurant located at 744 Noah Drive, Unit 101, had completed the application process and required advertising had been met. The owner is now requesting that the application for a license to sell alcohol, fear wine, buy the drink be approved. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to approve the license. Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item B under old business. Mayor Weaver called on City Attorney Bill Pickett to present to Council the second reading of the amendment to the city's alcohol ordinance to include breweries. Mr. Pickett read the ordinance amendment. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion that this be approved as the second reading of the brewery addition to the alcohol ordinance, and Council adopt the ordinance amendment. Councilmember Ensign Navy made such motion. Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item C under old business. Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Pickett to present to Council the second reading of an amendment to the city's zoning ordinance to allow for breweries as C2 general commercial and M1 manufacturing. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance change and adopt the amendment. Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item D under old business. Mayor Weaver recognized City Manager Jim Looney. Mr. Looney stated that the annexation of parcel 029A, 064, 004 of 111.8 acres as R1, single-family residential, had been tabled at last month's regular council meeting in order for the owner to research other possible entrances into the property. Mr. Looney called on Mark Chastain with Chastain and Associates PC to present his survey and recommendation that the owner use the Sharp Top Ridge Road entrance. Mr. Chastain stated that this would be the safest entrance as the grade would be too steep to enter from Park Mountain Road. Several residents spoke in opposition due to traffic and safety concerns. Paul King of the Ridge at Sharp Top LLC, owner of the property, stated that it would cost $200,000 to create an entrance off Park Mountain Road. Police Chief Greg Level stated that there have been two accidents at the intersection of Sharp Top Ridge Road and Cove Road since 2007. More discussion follows. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to annex the property as recommended by the planning commission. Councilmember John Fouse seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item A under new business. Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to present to Council an agreement with Appalachian Pre-Trial and Probation Program for the city's probation services. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to approve the agreement with the Appalachian Pre-Trial and Probation Program. Councilmember Kirk Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item B under new business. Mayor Weaver called on water and sewer superintendent David Hall and Mr. Looney to present to Council the need for a third well to be drilled of coal. Mr. Hall stated that this would be an additional source of water in the event long swamp creeks flow was at a reduced level due to what brand you decided to do with their leg, as well as it would provide an alternative source in case the city were to lose one of the other wells. Mr. Hall stated that he had attempted to get free quotes for the drilling of the well. Prime Hunt from Belonga, Georgia did not provide coal. Middle Georgia Water Systems of Zebulon, Georgia quoted $20,710, and Byers Well Drilling in Blairsville, Georgia quoted $14,950. Mr. Hall recommended using a low bit of Byers and stated that they had drilled the other two wells at that site. Mayor Weaver stated that he recommended the city build a road off Cove Road opposite the former location of the propane tanks because there is a deep shaft located at that site. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Ensign Navy made the motion to approve the low bit of Byers Well Drilling of $14,950. Councilmember Kirk Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item C under new business. Mr. Hall stated that he is asking for approval from Council to allow GBIT turn-up seed engineers to begin the application process for lawn and grant proceeds for the water pollution control plant expansion. He stated that the cost to the city would not exceed $15,000. Mr. Hall read the letter from current sheet engineers describing the process that would be involved in the application. A copy of the letter is to be attached to these minutes. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to approve the request to allow the city's engineer to begin the application process at cost not to exceed $15,000. Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item D under new business. Mayor Weaver called on Lonnie Waters to present for Council's approval a quote from peak pavement markings with strapping and thermoplastic strapping of the newly paved streets. Mr. Waters stated the total cost of the paint and thermoplastic strapping will be $44,719.90. Councilmember Kirk Ratfield made a motion to approve the quote. Councilmember John Fouse seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item E under new business. Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to present a letter of offer to sell the city property, to sell the city some property. But Mr. Looney stated that Integra Bank had contacted the city to sell 1.172 acre with a building located at the 125 North Main Street for a cost of $100,000. Mr. Looney stated that he estimated the property would provide the city with approximately 20 parking spots and the building to be used for city restrooms as well as the glass area used to display business brochures. There was discussion on how the city would pay for the property. Finance Director Lisa Hall recommended financing the purchase as the funds were not available in this year's budget. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to allow the city manager to move forward with the purchase of the property. Councilmember John Fouse seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Motion carried unanimously. Item F under new business. Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to present a property donation to the city. Mr. Looney stated that a family had contacted the city wishing to donate 1.14 acres located on Richard Street to be used as a city park. Discussion followed. Councilmember John Fouse made a motion to move forward with the city accepting the donation. Councilmember Kirk Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item G under new business. Mayor Weaver called upon City Clerk Lisa Hall to present for Council's review of reduced rate application. Ms. Hall stated that the applicant qualified for the reduced water sewer rates. Councilmember Kirk Ratfield made a motion to approve that. Councilmember Ensign Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item H under new business. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to go into executive session to discuss a potential lawsuit issue. Councilmember Kirk Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver closed the meeting to only include Mayor, Council, Attorney Bill Pickett, City Manager, and City Clerk. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to come out of executive session. Councilmember John Fouse seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver brought the meeting out of executive session and reopened the meeting. Finance Director Lisa Hall gave the financial report for the month of June 2018. Lonnie Waters updated Council on roads. Chief Greg Level gave a report of police activities for the month of June 2018. Chief Steve Replicate gave a report of fire activities for the month of June 2018. Being no other business to come forth, Council Mayor Weaver asked for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Council's schedule to the main ex at the regular drops meeting to be held August 6th, 2018.
Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as read.
Second. Discussion? Is there going to be a little change where I saw you tweaking while you were reading?
I'm going to add.
Imagine.
To present a letter of offer to sell the city.
No property.
Yes, you said the word.
Any other discussion? Being none, all in favor, vote by a show of hands. Thank you, Counsel.
Agenda has no old business. But there was some discussion and concern about the property on Richard Street. Anything happen on that, Jim, during the last month?
Bill's looking at it for us, checking the how it's, county court has, house has its ownership. May be a little bit difficult to make the transfer because of the number of owners right now.
And I think, don't they have some requirements that they want the city to comply with in order to take the property?
Be used as a park. Nothing different than what we talked about at that meeting. But hopefully, we can give you, give you and Council a better answer on that.
I keep it under old business. Under new business. Marble Festival event, I have Krista Kelly with the Jasper Merchants Association.
Actually, I will be doing most of the speaking.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm Haley Bushy. I am the president of the Jasper Merchants.
May I be counsel, Mr. Mayor? I'm here to speak to you about Marble Fest, which will be happening in a very short time. Weekend before you last year, asking to have the street closed. The decision was made for us not to be able to do that, and we are asking this year for that to happen. We feel that, for safety reasons, that we need to have the street closed. We get a lot of directing traffic. There was a couple of really close calls, but we were able to take care of. We had the shuttle running last year, nonstop. I think they ran every 40 minutes. There will be a second shuttle added this year, so we're, I think, like every 20 minutes, I think, is why we're telling you about that.
Let's go back to the street closing, please.
Yes.
Explain to me when and why.
Our timeline for the street closing, of course, will be closed for the parade in the morning, and I believe the parade starts at 10:00. So if I am correct, the street will be closed for the road race and just kind of remain closed through the parade, if that's the way.
That's the way you'd want to do it, Greg?
I think the road race is first.
Yes, yes. And then it stays closed until 10:00, and does it not open back up after the road race?
I think we close it, yeah.
It stays closed through the whole period, okay?
So our timeline would be set up for our vendors from 7:30 to 9:30. The chamber has asked that we have them ready to go by the time the parade starts, so we don't have people coming in and going at the same time. And we ask that it remain closed until around 6:30 on Sunday evening.
So we're coming all day?
All day, yes. We will run all day, then they will, the chamber will have their musical program, which I believe ends at 10:00. And then we'll have the vendors still lined up on the streets. We'll have security, of course, that we'll pay for between us and the chamber. But we just think it's, it would be much easier to keep it closed and safer to keep it closed as far as security at night, keeping people out of the booths, which I know they had issues with last year down in the park. We don't really know how it would work out with us because last year, of course, we got rained out after the first day, so all of the vendors packed up and went home on Saturday from Main Street. So I wish we could give you a little better idea.
So you're wanting to close the street from 6:00 in the morning for the road race until what time at night?
6:00 p.m. Sunday.
That's Saturday morning to Sunday night.
Yes, Saturday morning to Sunday night.
Mr. Greg?
I'm up here. Yes, sir.
Have a seat. Closing the street from 6:00 Saturday morning until Sunday evening? What do you project to be the issues? How will we get traffic from north to south?
We always set the detour up, you know, the run behind Woodville to Richard Street.
Turn behind the, well, we should have a park shop till that, where Albert's used to be.
Exactly. Turn right to go to Richard Street, and that's the safest place. Dangerous to run down, all the way down Woodville because it's a winding hill if you're coming out of town, you know, it's very dangerous. So we want to have an officer stationed there when here and heavy traffic scares us up. We can pull them across 53, and they can go on the back way and go up Springs to South Main.
So the traffic light will not be functioning from 6:00 in the morning until?
No, 53.
53. Yes, we don't, we just want to go from 53 down to the bank.
Yeah, I only get a permit for the parade. That's only time we go, but that's about.
So you're only asking for? But you're going to turn, you're turning traffic, the traffic light won't be working for north to south traffic, west.
Exactly.
So you're only asking for the street to be closed from the Old Apple Building up to the Woodbridge?
Yes.
Not, not the south.
Right, not all the way down. Did you have anything to say about that?
Yeah, but I haven't talked with Jim about it.
Okay. That is what I am asking, yes.
So from the Old Apple Building up to the Jasper, Jasper.
Yes.
Jasper, so that we could still go into Woodbridge if they come.
Exactly. And I believe the Woodbridge is going to be a pretty good park this year as well, but we can work with that little area there.
Have y'all talked to the business owners downtown?
Not this year, we haven't, but we will definitely work with the business owners. We're going to do the vendors to keep them off the lawn of the courthouse and set them in, in the parking spaces. And rather than hinder what I think the business owners are wanting to do, we want to make sure we showcase them to have them come right on, on the streets with us, and we hope to have enough vendors to where we can move all the way down the street on that closed area to help bring business to them. We will, like we did last year, go door to door and talk to every one of the vendors or every one of the brick and mortar folks and see who's interested and what their opinion is.
Do you? Yes, sir.
Has been any thought about how to handle the quarry tours currently? Quarry tours will come, will return by going down Seacoal, down Main Street, getting Seacoal, and then south. Greg, you can, I haven't driven a school bus. Dixie Street, could they come off 53 on the Dixie Street?
It'd be easier to do Richard Street. Richard Street'd be wider.
Yeah, Dixie Street's kind of far from us if you're not in a patrol car. Richard Street would be better access, I promise.
They would be able to make that turn in Indiana?
Yeah, it's tight on Dixie Street, it really is.
Okay. Just wondering how we would continue to do the quarry tours, which I'm assuming is still going to happen. So north to south traffic, if you're south, wanting to go north on Main Street, how would you get there?
Is South Main going to be closed?
No.
No, no. Come up to the red light, hang left, turn behind the drugstore, go north?
You could do that way, or?
You normally, you normally dead end it there, make the traffic turn Richard Street, so you can go all the way down to Richard Street, turn, you can't go back up. You can't get there from there because you're going to have?
Most people, they go Mary Street.
Mary Street's going to have a Marble Festival.
Right, yeah, it's one way out. You could go Pioneer, Eastern Predator. You can go Pioneer, the hood, hood, North Main, you can do that as well.
Well, I'm going to let the Council make the decision, and I'm going to voice my opinion and concern that I think you've created a heart attack in Main Street, lack of flow of traffic, flow of blood, one of the same doctors, is that not correct? So, but the Council gets to make the decision on this. I would, I would probably say no, but I don't get a vote, so I just want to make that very clear, so when I get to stand up and say, my goodness, there's no way to get north and south. There's no way to get north.
I understand that, but my worry is, we had some really close calls last year, and my worry is that with the two trolleys, the, I mean, the, the merchants had three golf carts that ran continuously. There was just so many close calls, and my worry is that we're going to, we're going to be in trouble if we get somebody hurt.
Well, you won't because there will be no traffic there this time, but you're looking at?
Well, we're hoping so, yes.
The conglomerate of north and south is going to be the issue.
You said you had an issue last, last time that Main Street was, that y'all had on Main Street was not closed, with people getting in to where the vendors were at?
Yes, because coming, most of the, a good bit of the people were walking up Stegal and coming up through that way, so we were basically standing there the entire day by Wingsology on that corner there to get them across the streets where the vendors all were. Because as you remember, where the courthouse is, the vendors were lined up on each side, so on the courthouse area.
The reason I ask is, what time, what time does most everybody, what time generally is everybody out of the Main Street area of afternoon on Saturday?
Well, we will close our booths after the music program, after Jack Gubryant played last year is when we were done. Around 10:00, we were usually pretty much off the street last year.
And the reason I ask, if it would help, if it would help the flow of traffic at a certain point at 10:00, maybe that night after everybody gets off Main Street, if we opened it up at that point in time until a date, until Sunday morning?
You'll have vendors.
The only worry is the vendors will be in the parking spaces at that time.
Let me ask you this. If we were to be able to use Woodville Street one way behind the drugstore to go north?
That's the way we did.
Okay, the other way to go?
We closed it so it makes you go to Stegal and Richard. Now, if we leave it open, you can come down. So you could, like, if you're leaving?
You can go north on it, you can come south. That's what needs to be done.
Yeah, that's what we do.
Okay. I think we just found a path, a bypass, keep the traffic flowing. There will be some major concerns, and we might need some detours, signs to, I mean, to show people how to get north to south.
We'll get some signs out, we'll put it on social media, run it in the paper, whatever. I mean, it's, I'm being sarcastic, but it's closed a lot, most of the systems, a lot of our nine days down.
Not, not when you got, on Mary Street, then you got Woodville blocked down.
Yeah, that's true. They'll get it.
Yeah, okay. Where are you going to be? Okay. With that, Counsel, would entertain a motion?
I have a question for you, Kirk.
Yes?
What was your, with running of the carts up there last year, the golf carts? Was that where we ran into the issues at mainly? Or both?
It was truly both. I was manning one of the golf carts, and it was consistently being used. There was not a stopping period.
Yeah.
The second, the biggest issue, in my opinion, was the actual vehicle traffic on Main. You know, with the festival, that brings out young children with families, and?
And y'all weren't even at it last year.
That was our concern. We had people crossing. I believe Wingsology last year actually assisted with crossing a little bit during training.
Your honor, is it open for public comment?
I'm pleased, I'll let you make a comment.
It seems like we're beginning to utilize the green space in Main Street and potentially down towards the Woodbridge now a little bit more, and I can understand your hesitancy to shut off the flow from north to south. But is it imperative that the flow continues? Isn't there some way to, to basically say, stay out of downtown at this particular time? I mean, I'm not being facetious, as the chief was, but I'm, I'm asking, you know, because we do hope to utilize the green space, we do hope to utilize the Woodbridge, we do hope to have the vendors come down to Main Street to where we expand the Marble Festival up towards Main Street.
Well, I think we can get Woodville Street functioning where people can actually go from South Main to North Main without having to ride all the way around town, and that's by using Woodville Street and Richard Street. They can kind of draw this up, kind of show the old plan to how you want to flow traffic.
Well, they will go down Woodville Street, get back, cut across the courthouse parking lot, get back.
Some will tell you that it's not a public thoroughfare.
That's not a public thoroughfare, I can tell you that.
The parking lot?
Yes.
What's going to bring you right in the middle of the?
They, no, you're not going to be parking there.
Can't get there, can't get there in here anyway.
Of course, don't be one. Well, y'all need to get a hotel checkbook.
I'm ready for a motion.
I make a motion?
Yes.
I will not be voting as I'm a member of the chamber.
Okay. I make a motion that we close?
It's more of a chamber thing in it anyway.
It's actually a chamber event. We are assisting the chamber.
We'll let you vote. You can't get out of that.
It's closed, so that's all that matters.
We're all a member of something, I promise. Go ahead and make, finish your motion, and we'll excuse your?
Well, thank you.
Membership.
I make a motion that we close?
It's more of a chamber thing in it anyway.
It's actually a chamber event. We are assisting the chamber.
We'll let you vote. You can't get out of that.
It's closed, so that's all that matters.
We're all a member of something, I promise. Go ahead and make, finish your motion, and we'll excuse your?
Well, thank you.
Membership.
I make a motion that we close?
It's more of a chamber thing in it anyway.
It's actually a chamber event. We are assisting the chamber.
We'll let you vote. You can't get out of that.
It's closed, so that's all that matters.
We're all a member of something, I promise. Go ahead and make, finish your motion, and we'll excuse your?
Well, thank you.
Membership.
I make a motion that we close?
It's more of a chamber thing in it anyway.
It's actually a chamber event. We are assisting the chamber.
We'll let you vote. You can't get out of that.
It's closed, so that's all that matters.
We're all a member of something, I promise. Go ahead and make, finish your motion, and we'll excuse your?
Well, thank you.
Membership.
I make a motion that we close?
It's more of a chamber thing in it anyway.
We will, we will go door to door, just like we did last year. I think this folks enhance the business. And that's exactly what we hope to do.
I think we're concerned about the car traffic then of all the businesses because this, the chamber commerce effort to increase foot traffic.
Exactly.
Any other discussion? Being none, all in favor, vote by a show of hands? That was unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Did you have something else?
We'll make you proud. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we've got another show in China. Jim? Jeep Fest. Greg?
Where's your whip?
Greg, what do you, look back, I've got to have this quote. What do you always say about Main Street?
Why don't we have it, and I wrote it?
Because people want to walk down there.
All right, Jim. Item B, Jeep Fest Show and Shine. Thank you for making the presentation.
Okay. And as, after I make this motion or recommendation, I would like to call up Charles Cooteri?
Cooteri, is there?
Because he would like to add something to this.
Yes, sir.
But in your pocket, Counsel, Mayor, you've got a letter from Chris Stansel, Captain of Pickens County Sheriff's Office, requesting that we close Main Street. Oh, strange that anyone would request to close Main Street. This is for a very good event. The, on Friday, the 31st, Sheriff's Department Jeep Fest will be holding an event lining up Jeeps for the Show and Shine, starting at 5:00 and ending with a concert at 10:00. This has been a wonderful event in the past, a great fundraiser for the charities in the area and outside the area, and my recommendation is to just be approved.
This, this was the fourth year we've closed on Main Street?
Fourth.
It's the seventh, seventh, uh?
Jeep Fest.
And probably?
Since they moved the Marble Festival.
Yeah. But with that, Greg, you're there, Steve, give the Council a little bit of what we anticipate being on Main Street. You can flip the camera around and catch Greg's response or something. This is, if you want me to make the presentation, I will, but you're directing traffic. What do we expect? Have you talked to the sheriff?
No, he was, we're going to wait for Chris Stansel, the sheriff, until he gets approved by Council, and then we'll be meeting with the sheriff's office to discuss the logistics and planning for the show and shine.
That's a little different. They used to show up earlier than that, but are they anticipating a larger crowd this year? Jim, have you talked to Chris?
I mean, the town or the merchants had three golf carts that ran continuously. There was just so many close calls. My worry is that we're gonna, we're gonna be in trouble if we get somebody hurt.
Well, you won't because there will be no traffic there this time. But you're looking at-
Well, we're hoping so, yes.
The conglomerate of north and south is going to be the issue.
You said you had an issue last, last time that Main Street was, that y'all had on Main Street was not closed with people getting in to where the vendors were at?
Yes, because coming, most of the, I mean, a good bit of the people were walking up Stegal and coming up through that way. So, we were basically standing there the entire day by Wingsology on that corner there to get them across the streets where the vendors all were. Because as you remember, where the courthouse is, the vendors will line up on each side. So, on the courthouse area.
The reason I ask is, what time, what time does most everybody, what time generally is everybody out of the Main Street area of afternoon on Saturday?
Well, we will close our booths after the music program. After Jacob Bryant played last year is when we were done. Around 10 o'clock, we were usually pretty much off the street last year.
And the reason I ask, if it would help, if it would help the flow of traffic at a certain point at 10 o'clock, maybe that night after everybody gets off Main Street, if we opened it up at that point in time until a, until a date, until Sunday morning, you'll have vendors-
The only worry is the vendors will be in the parking spaces at that time.
Let me ask you this. If we were to be able to use Whitfield Street one way behind the drugstore to go north-
That's the way we did. We closed it. We closed it so it makes you go to Stegal or Richard. Now, if we leave it open, you can come down. So, you could, like, if you're leaving-
You can go north on it. You can come south. That's what needs to be done.
Yeah, that's what we do.
Okay. I think we just found a path, a bypass. Keep the traffic flow. There will be some major concerns and we might need some detours. Signs to, I mean, to show people how to get north to say-
We'll get some signs out. We'll put it on social media and run it in the paper and whatever.
Okay.
I mean, it's, I'm being sarcastic, but it's closed a lot and most of the citizens are not in town.
Not, not when you got on Mary Street and you got Whitfield Block down.
It's true. They'll get through.
Yeah, okay. Where are you gonna be? Okay. With that, Council, would entertain a motion.
I have a question for you, Kirk.
Yes?
What was your, with running of the carts up there last year, the golf carts? Was that where we ran into the issues at mainly, or both?
Truly both. I was manning one of the golf carts and it was consistently being used. There was not a stopping period.
Yeah.
The second, the biggest issue in my opinion was the actual vehicle traffic on Main. You know, with the festival, that brings out young children with families and-
And y'all weren't even at it last year.
That was our concern. We had people crossing. I believe Wingsology last year actually assisted with crossing a little bit during the pandemic.
Your honor, is it open for public comment?
Ah, we'd let, we'll let you make a comment.
It, it seems like we're beginning to utilize the green space in Main Street and potentially down towards the Woodbridge now a little bit more. And, and I can understand your hesitancy to, to shut off the flow from north to south. But is it imperative that the flow continues? Isn't there some way to, to basically say, stay out of downtown at this particular time? I mean, I, I, I'm not being facetious as the chief was, but I'm, I'm asking, you know, because we do hope to utilize the green space. We do hope to utilize the Woodbridge. We do hope to, to have the vendors come down to Main Street to where we expand the Marble Festival up towards Main Street.
Well, I, I think we can get Whitfield Street functioning where people can actually go from South Main to North Main without having to ride all the way around town. And that's by using Whitfield Street and Richard Street. They can kind of draw this up. It's kind of the old plan to how you want to flow traffic.
Well, people go down Whitfield Street, get back across the courthouse parking lot, get back.
Some will tell you that it's not a public thoroughfare.
That's not a public thoroughfare. I can tell you that.
The parking lot?
Yes.
What's gonna bring you right in the middle of the-
They, no, no guy gonna be parking there.
Well, can't get there, can't get there in here anyway.
Of course, don't be one. Well, y'all need to get a hotel checkbook.
You ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
I make a motion?
Yes. I will not be voting as I'm a member of the chamber.
Okay. I make a motion that we close-
It's more of a chamber thing in it anyway.
It's actually a chamber event. We are assisting the chamber.
We'll let you vote. Can't get that petty.
All right. It's low, so that's all that matters.
Well, we're all a member of something, I promise you. Go ahead and make, finish your motion and we'll excuse your-
Well, thank you.
Membership.
I make a motion that we close Main Street and you navigate what is the best way to, to do it.
I'm sure after we get approved, we'll sit down and get together and we've got to get Jeep Fest coming and we got, we'll make the sheriff's office next.
Well, I just figured that was easier if you didn't navigate that and that's one less thing we're gonna have to, to deal with.
I think this may be the traffic flow that I've always wished for. I got a motion. I got a motion and second discussion.
Just make sure you talk with the businesses a little bit prepared.
We will. We will go door to door, just like we did last year.
I think, I think this folks enhance the business-
And that's exactly what we hope to do.
I think we're concerned about the car traffic then of all the businesses because this, the Chamber of Commerce effort to increase foot traffic.
Exactly.
Any other discussion? Being in all favor, vote with your hands. That was unanimous. Did you have something else?
We'll make you proud.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we've got another show and shine. Jim, Jeep Fest. Greg, Greg?
Where's the whip?
Greg, what do you, look back, I gotta have this quote. What do you always say about Main Street?
Why don't we have it in our road?
Because people want to walk down there.
All right, Jim. Item B, Jeep Fest Show and Shine. Thank you for making the presentation.
Okay. And as, after I make this motion or recommendation, I would like to call up Charles Cooterie?
Cooterie, is there?
Because he would like to add something to this.
Yes, sir.
But in your pocket, Council Mayor, you've got a letter from Chris Stansel, Captain of Pickens County Sheriff's Office requesting that we close Main Street. Strands that anyone requests to close Main Street. This is for a very good event. The, on Friday, the 31st, Sheriff's Department Jeep Fest will be holding an event lining up Jeeps for the Show and Shine, starting at 5:00 and ending with a concert at 10:00. This has been a wonderful event in the past, a great fundraiser for the charities in the area and outside the area. And my recommendation is to just be approved.
This, this was the fourth year we closed on Main Street?
It's the seventh, seventh Jeep Fest and probably-
Since they moved to Marble Hill.
Yeah.
But with that, Greg, you're there. Steve, give the council a little bit of what we anticipate being on Main Street. You can flip the camera around and catch Greg's response or something. This is, if you want me to make the presentation, I will, but you're directing traffic. What, what do we expect? Have you talked to the sheriff?
No, he was, we're gonna wait for Chris Stansel, the sheriff, until he gets approved by council and then we'll be meeting with the sheriff's office to discuss the logistics and planning for the Show and Shine.
That's a little different. They used to show up earlier than that. But are they anticipating a larger crowd this year? Jim, have you talked to Chris? It's grown a little bit every year.
We did not talk about numbers of Jeeps, but I heard through another conversation that they're all, at that time, they were up to 900.
And these Jeeps, talking about blocking Main Street all the way from one end to the other end, Jeeps side by side, hundreds of them.
Yes.
And you truly can't walk through Main Street with a Jeep passenger. Well, we entertain a motion to approve the Show and Shine on Main Street. What's that day again, Jim?
August 31st, Friday.
I make a motion that we approve the closure of Main Street for this event.
Motion to approve the Show and Shine on Main Street. Got a motion and a second discussion. Being in all favor, vote with your hands. Thank you, Council.
Charles, if you would, I think, I understand you've got a motion or a request from council also.
Yes, sir. So, last year, or we, this is our, to be our third Jeep Fest. The first one was the second week we opened, which was not a smart idea in retrospect. But the second year, we requested a beer, outside beer and wine license and that really helped out.
Totally agree with you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm with Wingsology. I apologize. I'm Carlo's partner. Carlo is-
How's he doing?
He's doing better. He's, he's resting at a friend's house now. He's, he's had surgery with success. And he's got about three or four weeks before he's able to get up and moving again. But as a result, I'm here, not knowing anything what to do. So, I'm just kind of wigging my way through it, but-
You're already doing better than he did last year.
Oh, okay, great, great. We got, I'll keep the New Jersey accent down. So, so we're requesting outside beer and wine license. We did last year. We, we really tight on, you know, security on-
And we've approved and the conditions that we can allow that. We did last year. So, with that, we entertain a motion to approve. And I think we give them like two times to do this. Didn't they do it twice last year?
I, I believe for Marble Fest also. He, he primarily runs the business.
Okay, okay.
This request is on-
Just, just for the Jeep Fest.
Jeep Fest, yes.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Being in all favor, vote with your hands. Thank you. And thank you for coming tonight and doing this because we needed it for the record until we approved this, so we-
Thank you, thank you.
Can't just give it to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was unanimous. Okay, item C, alcohol license application request for continuation, Jasper Enterprises Incorporated, Mr. Underwood.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm here tonight to ask to go on with the alcohol license for Mr. Nocui, Ali Nocui. He is complying now with everything. He has his sign up. He has his ad in the paper. And honestly, we go ahead on with it. I have a, a letter back from the police department where his, his fingerprints, everything, everything's good there.
Okay, so how many more weeks of advertising, any?
Four more weeks.
Four more weeks. Would entertain a motion for continuation? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. Being in all favor, vote with your hands. Thank you, Council. That's unanimous. Thank you, sir. Ms. Royal, reduce water rates, item D, sewer application, sewer application.
I have two years of golf carts around. They're both golf carts under our ordinance.
Would entertain a motion?
Ms. Lisa, if you'll look at one of the applications, there's a discrepancy in the address. Is that normal?
In, in what?
The address.
The residency. There's a discrepancy in one of the applications. Do we require proof of residency?
Of course, they have the waterway.
Well, they're on our order test.
What, what's the other address?
You have a case, I don't say it.
Sorry, Frank. I'm getting an education here.
Well, this is the city's efforts to provide service to people who are, just have low incomes, that meet certain ranges. And we have the, those in the water department, people come in and apply and then they, that's how they get to us from here. For the address you referred to, Jackson Street? Well, this is his, closest to here, benefits. And we need to make sure, make sure that this address, he lives at this address before we can prove that in the case. If not, we won't.
Well, there.
Thank you.
Motion to approve or disapprove?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve? Motion is second, discussion. Being in all favor, vote with your hands. Thank you, Council. Yes, I apologize, but we're going to go into executive session at the request of Councilmember Sonny Proctor regarding legal and professional issue. You should not be very alone.
Motion to go into closed session.
Got a motion to go into closed session? Got a motion second, discussion. Being in all favor, vote with your hands. Okay, entertain a motion?
So moved to come out on second closed session.
Got a motion to come out of executive session?
Second.
Got a motion second right here, discussion. Being in all favor, vote with your hands. Thank you. We are officially out of executive session. And with that, I would like to recognize Councilmember Sonny Proctor regarding the issue at hand.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the City of Jasper waived the restriction on the Escrowed Economic Development Funds for a one-time use of $1,100 as part of a potential separation agreement for a former economic development director.
Got a motion and a second?
Second.
Got, fasten you. I'm gonna get it to her again. Motion is second, discussion. Being in all favor, vote with your hands. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Sonny. Okay. Next item is item, nah, mayor's report. Finance report, Ms. Lisa.
In your pocket, you have a financial report for July 2018. We collected in sales tax last month of $111,400 for a total of $723,430 for the year. That's up from $654,768 last year. And at the current time, all, all, all funds are under budget at this time, or right, right about budget. For this SLOSS fund, we, I'll write down, oh, here we go. We collected $86,693 for the month. We have a cash balance right now, $488,930 in the SLOSS fund. Forty-four approximate, almost $45,000 of that is committed for the striping project. And so far this year, we've spent $522,154 for paving projects and on street signs, we've spent $8,313 in that fund. And I didn't really have anything to say of that water supply funds right at, right at budget as well.
Questions, Council? Thank you, Lisa. Lonnie, item B, roads and other?
Mayor and Council, the big question is about the striping, contact with the striping company today. They were supposed to be up here last week, but due to all the rains, the floods and everything, they had to postpone several things. The conversation I had with them today is Wednesday and probably Thursday morning. They are planning on being here to do all the lawn striping and anything concerning paint, the marking paint, like the parking spaces on Stegal or back streets or something like that. Main Street, they were gonna try their best to get back with me today at before 5:00 and tell me about the parking spaces on Main Street. All of that will be hand done, not with trucks. So, they did not make the deadline, so I could give you a report on that this afternoon, but they're gonna get to it as quick as they can.
Okay, now, big question again. Are they gonna try and do that after 5:00?
The parking spaces will be done after street is closed. I think they're gonna go like from 7:00 to 7:00 in the morning, somewhere in that timeframe. The crosswalks will probably be in that timeframe also.
They're gonna block the street off in this?
Yes, overnight. We'll block the streets off. In the, the marking paint that they're gonna do, the, all the long lines, center lines, sidelines and everything will be done in a day.
This thing's gonna shine like a new penny.
Yes.
Looks good at present. That all you got?
Right now.
Lonnie, the wiring that was good when they were doing the milling, is that?
That is gonna be corrected when they put in the traffic lights because they've got to do that anyway with this new system.
What's up, they don't land. That's what I was gonna ask.
Okay. Supposedly the 15th of August, they will come in and start order footings and foundations for the traffic mastards.
Okay, and they got us the color we wanted and the, like, the one on 53.
They have that in.
They have that information. They're supposed to be giving us the cost for that to-
But they will do, like, the foundations and the footings, I don't know what order it'll be in, but they're gonna go like from Jasper, hour two, and then into Gember, Panning, or wherever what order. And then they'll come back and they'll do another stage on all three of them. So, they said by the time they completely got finished, it could be in February with the traffic lights. That's with all three counties.
Thank you. Greg?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The police department for the month of July responded to 976 calls from the Iowa law center, bonded to 57 more vehicle accidents, issued a total of 78 citations for following, one DUI, 38 speeding on the seatbelt, two unlawful use of a wireless device, one reckless driving, two uninsured motorists, 28 serious violations, four suspended or revoked, one possession of marijuana. Georgia State Patrol issued a total of 124, Grand Tullin City Court, 202. Took a total of 33 state warrants for the following, one for violation of a TPO, a temporary protective order misdemeanor, one aggravated assault felony, one reckless conduct misdemeanor, one terrorist threats and acts felony from trespassing misdemeanor, cruelty to children, first degree felony, seven counts cruelty to children, the third degree misdemeanor, one fraudulent, obtaining controlled substance misdemeanor, to shoplifting misdemeanor, to felony shoplifting, three simple battery, handling violence, one set by deception, one battery felony, three forgery in the first degree felony, possession of methamphetamine felony, possession of marijuana misdemeanor, suspended driver's license, no registration, no insurance, and a fixing license plate with intentional conceal identity automobile, misdemeanor, and one seatbelt violation. Miss Lane has called, responded to six, one alarm calls, four trespassing, roaring, 14 authority calls, nine harassment calls, 34 domestic abuse, 92 suspicious activity investigated, two burglaries.
Questions, Council?
Chief, do two burglaries or anything in one area?
I believe one of them was a stored building, if I am mistaken, and one was, I think, a parlor complex.
Chief, how you been with your cell phone? Well, I was gonna ask that question.
We wrote, we wrote to citations. One of our guys last Sunday stopped one, but we turned it over to the drug task force and I was a young man driving while talking on the cell, cell phone. He had a quarter pound of marijuana.
Last night.
Scales and $1,600 in cash.
Rest me, I'm stupid.
But yeah, I was talking with state troopers and they, you know, when law first come out, everybody, but you can start seeing, everybody, the news wore off and people-
It started to ease that.
Started to ease back to their old habits, so.
I talked to state troopers the other day and they were a little lenient.
Yeah, we, we gave them about two or three weeks and then we started that. But for the most part, most people are in the band.
I've noticed some more people looking at the road.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
Thanks, sir. Chief, roll.
I wouldn't say. I appreciate you saying that.
I, I know the company hit lost a little weight. I believe you lost a little weight.
Yeah, my left ear is a little thinner. That's about it.
Must be the rate.
It's red. Dominant color. Mayor and Council, four of month of July, the city fire department responded to 96 emergencies. Those were no structure fires inside the city, two outside the city. One vehicle fire inside and our outside, no grass or brush fires in or out. Eight more vehicle accidents with injuries inside the city, two outside. 33 emergency medical responses inside the city, 29 outside. 14 other calls in, seven outs. As of the end of the month, it's 815 total. I'm special with the two sets of plans and the conduct of 18.
Questions, Council?
Chief, I've had the pleasure of visiting your department recently and I want to commend you for a clean house.
Thank you very much.
And very professional staff. They were very kind to me. Give me two.
Thank you very much. We try.
Thank you.
I hear the truck's coming a little earlier than I thought.
Matter of fact, I got an update this morning. 100% inspection will probably take place closer to the first of the month, which means I'll be flying to Ohio. Once that's done, it'll be delivered to the dealership in Alabama. We'll probably have it within two weeks of that.
Why you can't have it till the time? You promised.
It's September, is what I've been told.
You promised. When did he say he wanted his truck?
Well, the original delivery date was late November.
He said, don't worry, but don't worry, don't worry about all that money. It's gonna be a year or so before we get it.
We're gonna make a payment in about four, five years.
Do you wash them too?
Yeah, we can wash it.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Sonny, give us an update on the veterans' report. I think it's Thursday?
Oh, yes, sir. It's been rescheduled till Thursday, the 11 o'clock. And we couldn't do it last week because of the rain, even though we didn't get the word out quite as good as we hoped to. We still had 100 or 150 people show up on Thursday, but it should be all good on Thursday. I hope everybody can attend. If you haven't been out there, you need to go out there. It really turned into something really special. A lot of people contributed to it, a lot of energy, and it really is a nice monument.
Gotta be 11 o'clock?
11 o'clock on Thursday. 11 o'clock sharp. Rain or snow, right, or shine.
Oh, their deadline is at any time. Your papers don't get the bricks made.
Oh, yeah, we've got it. It's expandable, so.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm just-
So, it's expandable, so you, you know, you'll, we've built in there where people can add over time, but no, there's no deadline.
Question I have from a citizen, was there a specific reason it was held during the week versus on the Saturday?
That's when the veterans wanted to have it.
Um, that's when the veterans wanted to have it. They chose the date and the rescheduled date. I don't know the rationale behind that, but, um, they had, you know, they discussed Flag Day, they discussed July 4th, they just, uh, discussed waiting for Veterans Day again and, uh, this was the day they chose.
And to your concern, I'm just nearly, you might not be able to be there because you're working, but more people will be available because they are working in town. There'll probably be a lot more crowd there, but casual work day. I've noticed that. Saturday, people have been regarding.
That's fair.
Okay. Uh, with that, Lisa, you got a question you want me to ask?
Yeah, about the council meeting next month.
Would you explain your position on this?
Well, it's Labor Day, the first Monday, and the next Monday, I'm going to be in class, so I was hoping maybe we could have it on the September 5th, which is a Wednesday.
That would be a quickening. We need to get on the way that works for us if it weren't for you.
Okay, let's, let's go in and prove it if we can. For September, the 5th, the Wednesday, will be our meeting in, uh, September. Entertain a motion to approve that day?
I make a motion that we move our meeting for September to the 5th at 6:00 p.m. Okay.
Second. So, motion in second. Discussion? Being in all favor, vote with your hands? John, you have anything to report from JYSI?
Uh, just be ready to all season, front and center. Everybody watch the paper, put some weight on it. It'll be a fun year.
All right.
Oh, and we're also doing Paul Ball.
So what?
Paul Ball.
With that...
Mr. John, one thing, y'all should have a email concerning a meeting, joint meeting with the, uh, uh, Pickett County Commissioners and Ben Turnipsey to discuss the, uh, Grand View Project.
What day is that?
It's Wednesday, the 15th. The, uh, I think the letter originally had 6:00 o'clock on it. There is also a law tournament that day, so there will be a request to change that to 7:00 o'clock for the golfers in the...
What golf tournament is it?
Pintry?
Yeah, Rotary.
Rotary?
Rotary.
She said 7:00 p.m.
Seven. At the, uh, county admin building.
What? So that's going to be 7:00 o'clock, uh, Wednesday, the 15th?
Yeah. You should have a, an email on it and, uh, I am sure that we'll get some thoughts out of it, man.
Thank you. Being no other business, we entertain a motion.